Good morning, good morning to Melang. My name is Lawrence McDonald, but most of you know me as McD. I am here as the leader of the delegation this morning.
Before we start proceedings, I would like everybody to rise for the anthem, and then I would humbly request that all men remove their head covering so that we can sing the anthem.
Thank you, thank you very much. Firstly, firstly, let me say, halalaa Bloomfontaine, halalaa. I'm going to introduce the other members of the portfolio committee soon, but I just wanted to bring the attention to how the program is going to be evolving. I will be going over the bill in a helicopter view, just to explain the key points of it. And then I'll give you an opportunity to give your inputs on the bill. We are, we are all aware that there is some serious issues in our country with load shedding and potholes and all of those key issues. But I would plead with you to please refrain from, from moving outside the ambit of this bill. But this is your meeting, you are here to give us your inputs. So if you do raise pertinent issues, I, we will make sure as a portfolio committee that it reaches the right ears. So, I will be, after I've introduced everybody and I've gone through the helicopter view of the bill. I will ask for hands, and those people that have been called will sit in the front row here. And then you'll be called to the podium to make your inputs. There will also be an opportunity for you to give written submissions. Until the thirty first of March of this year. And we have very capable and able staff sitting in, right in the second row here at the front. And they will gladly help you and assist you to do written submissions. Now that we've got all the processes out of the way, let me introduce the other honorable members with us here today. On my far left is Honorable Ketama Baala Sitole. In the middle here, I have Honorable Ma Benah. On my immediate left is Honorable Sitolo. On my far right, I have Honorable Pete May. In the middle, we have Honorable Fikile Kumalo. And immediately to my right is Honorable Ramadwa. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down, and then we'll quickly go through the, the pertinent issues and the pertinent highlights of the bill, and then we'll continue after that. I'm going to start with the Rail Safety Bill. The Railway Safety Bill 2021 seeks to improve the regulatory framework regulating railway safety in the Republic of South Africa in order to improve the safety of passengers and freight. The bill seeks to repeal the National Railway Safety Regulator Act of 2002. The NRSR Act established the railway safety regulator to oversee the and promote railway safety operations through the appropriate support. Monitoring and enforcement guided by an enabled regulatory framework, the NRSR Act has been in operation since twenty September 2002. The NRSR Act was last amended in 2009, and since then there has been major developments in the country such as a massive stock, rolling stock investment program and the introduction of the first standard gauge railway system. These developments were not anticipated during the amendment of the existing NRSR Act. The bill also seeks to promote the use of rail as a preferred mode of transport that would also be able to positively contribute to the country's economy. The bill was first approved for public partis, public consultation in February 2018. And the public consultation in all provinces were conducted in March 2018 by the Department of Transport. Critical stakeholders such as the National Economic Development and Labour Council, NELAC, and the Organized Labour were also consulted during the process. Inputs received during public consultation have been considered during the preparation of the bill prior to tabling their off in Parliament. I will now go through some objectives of the bill. The bill retains a number of elements of the NRSR Act, endeavoring to provide greater clarity on several issues and introduce new concept design to enhance railway safety. The bill seeks to place the emphasis and focus on railway safety and to recognize operators' role in managing and implementing safety measures with the RSR promoting safety and ensuring compliance with such measures. The bill furthermore seeks to provide guidance on the governance of the RSR and to address concerns raised over time by operators in the respect of the system of railway safety in South Africa. The bill seeks to remove perceived conflicts of interest and to provide a flexible framework for management, managing railway safety. In addition, it proposes that the RSR must oversee a framework of safety critical guides. Enables operators to undertake safe railway operations. Facilitates a modern, flexible and efficient regulatory regime that ensures the continuing enhancement of safe railway operations. Encourages the collaboration and participation of interested and effective parties in improving safety. Promotes the harmonization of the railway safety control of the republic with the objectives and requirements for safe railway operations in the Southern African developing countries. Ensures coherent governance of railway safety for the republic as whole. The bill will also deal with the Railway Safety Regulator Board and Management. The bill seeks to provide guidance on the governance on the RSR Board and Management, which includes the following. The nomination process with the minister appointing between seven and thirteen members, majority serve as independent non-executive members. Also, the term of office, non-executive members serve for a three-year term, which is renewable for a total of two consecutive terms. Appointment of the CEO, the minister appoints the chief executive officer, CEO from the list of at least two candidates recommended by the board. Also, the dissolution of the board, the minister may also, may upon good cause shown dissolve the board and must appoint an administrator to take over the functions of the board and commence with a new board nominations and appointment process. This bill will also seek to provide for railway safety permits, which includes the following. Any person who wants to undertake any railway or railway operation must apply to the RSI in a prescribed manner for a safety permit. The holder of such a safety permit must annually pay the safety permit fee in respect of every type of railway or railway operations authorized in that safety permit, irrespective of the period of validity of that safety permit. The RSR must, after considering an application, notify the applicant in writing of the outcome of the application, and if the application is approved, the RSR must in that notice, notice specify. The period of validity of the permit, three to five years. The types of railway operations authorized by or under that safety permit. The conditions subject to which the safety permit is granted, and if applicable, the date by when the fees or levies must be paid by the applicant in respect of that specific safety permit. So, we, we are, we're requesting that all affected and interested parties, individuals and organized formations are invited to participate in these public hearings and by making oral submissions to the Portfolio Committee and Transport. So we want to hear from you, your inputs today. So I will open the floor for, for your hands just after this translation. So I want the first ten hands, by a show of hands, can I please see hands at one, two. Number one at the back there. Anybody else? Number two? Anybody else? Number three? On this side, nobody? We can start with those three, and I'm sure then, when we, we'll get some more hands after that. So can the, can, can we have them seated here, please? Can we have number one to the podium so long? Please state your name, and if you represent any organization, and then continue with your inputs, please, sir.
Okay, no, thank you very much. My name is Bongane Velman, former Oduendian Manguo. Firstly, let's start by appreciating the committee to be here. We then get the issue as approved in 2018. So it means after five years, we're still discussing it, but I'm not going to focus there, I'm going to deal with two issues. The challenge we have is the issue, the reason we have high level of accident is informed by transport logistics, the issue of goods. Like for instance, most accidents when you check, either the truck driver was sleeping is why we're faced with many challenges. I think the solution to this, we must take the roots of China. In China, there are three issues. When it comes to issue, you had the train. There is localized, professional and national, let me do example. This, this popular house here, this railway, if what to say was stress about our community, what must then happen from this bill is that we must be able to make sure that we decentralize this thing. Let's say if for logistics, every company which deals with issue of transportation of goods, there must then be refed to railway. On that way, we'll have smooth movement on roads. Because if you check N1, all this national road, the challenge we have, you have buses, you have trucks. If we can deal with that, we're going to eliminate the issue of potholes, issue of accidents. Because those people, some of them, they drive for twelve hours before giving rest. If you want to rest, you know that if you are resting, you will be late, then your boss will detect the man. If we can then subject the issue of logistics, goods, mountainous railway, we will then find the solution. But that thing on its own must then be dealt with systematically. Let's say for instance, if you are dealing against it, the imports, say, looking to the latter form, they're bad. The railway should be divided in such a way that if you do a motor, and most of them, they go to Jobek. They should be better. If they are local, including the issue, your community members like to move from here to Tabantu, we must also be subjected, it means everything that has to do with transport. Either your takes of buses must be taken there because one, it will deal with issue of resources. The trains are very cheap, if we can deal with that thing, it's gonna help. And the other issue, issue, yeah, the road signs, signs, design. There are no sign. Every time you will see, there is a tender, there is a, there is someone benefiting from government, who's a friend or a family member of someone, we must also invest to those issues. It must not be a situation like for instance, if you go to Arfeti between Nyaga Longa and Richie and Botaville. Many people have been dying there because of the road is not in good, good health. Nothing is happening, what the government does, they always go there, they put a sign to say, drive with thirty kilometers, twenty kilometers, but when there is no really, nothing is happening. I think we must deal with those issues, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Next, next speaker. Thank you, but before you start, just wanted to also recognize Honorable Masindi has joined us from Parliament as well, she's also a member of Parliament. Let us just greet everybody here as well. Welcome. Okay, you can continue, thank you.
Eh, Moleni. Otetaya, omsa kiva ngie kama. Gefandi, omsokaka. Tivela, ewo twelve. Indo, indi zai vesa, siwa twelve e one. Itrini ibi kona kala. Ena ngoko ai seko, indo tinabesi kala, i safety. Ena footinbe sibonile, omsa last time, ngoko bedise, itinbeke. Stationess, as itinbeke, simtaka. Itrini kekthayo, abandwa tati mkuunzi, babulawa. Behkala neti ndawo, neti zaotilino. Akwosani, mopeke retaspeka na kona. Sikala ngendoe, nyakwotrini. Kasifunu peke iste inkeipi, itrini aziko. Indo sikala ngayone ti safety. Ena footinbe nza kai, itrini bi kwasi, usone la siso nke. Abanyabanda, wakazufikele lipasi. Abanyabanda, wakazufikele litexi. Ngoku, itrini bestkala njenge, houti, na tita. Ihauti nibina yo, ina i local trini, kutya ihautrini. Na tia, Applumfontaine, na tia, ingati, singakala, itrini, ezokwazo, ama local, Blufontaine, to botshabi, lo, tutabansu. To vepe na, itrini azubeziko, na kona. To wepe na, itraini nezu beziko na dala, kota ngoko aziseko. And foot na pakati traini, vehtkala i security. Si kuazi na ti kasihleli pakati traini, nizindo na yonge pakati traini, ze yenzeka pakati traini. Abanabatu ngunzi, abanabu lawa pakati traini, bata tuli ndo zapa. Jenga ngoko last month, ngobe nfele Cape Town. In Cape Town, itraini na kona, it's not good. Abanabata la, ababononga niksilando besiti, siabulaya la ngerelewe, ifiki le pakatu ko Blofante. Kota tinabeskala neti indowe, sibene trainiamba local. Iyo ka ndo mna vende kala, zebana bulela.
Um, greetings to everyone and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Saikiwa. There's one thing that I want to highlight and I want to mention is that we need, we, we had trains before. And we are asking for trains to, to, to be brought back. And what I saw is that the stations are dirty and the stations are not safe. So we are requesting that safety be a priority. When we travel far, for an example, when we go to the Eastern Cape, we need to be able to get trains. Because trains are reasonable. We don't afford the other modes of transport because they're expensive. We also need trains locally like Haodenghas, Haotrain. And this will make life easier for us. We are also asking for safety in train, inside the trains. Because what I saw when I was in Cape Town, it was very scary. Elderly people were being robbed of their belongings in trains. So what I'm requesting is that we get train services back and we are asking for safety inside and outside the trains. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before you start, anybody else, other hands that want to come and give inputs? Number one, anybody else? Number two, can you move, you can come to the front? Number three? Where? Number four, number four? You can come to the front so long. Thank you. Um, okay, I think let's, let's continue and then we'll carry on. The floor is yours, sir.
All right, ki lebo hesvak. My name ki Joni Mahetla from Wad twelve. Eh, na ki amachela, amachela bili. Because of why? Eh, the traini is a very easy and eh, transport dealer but the poor of the poorest. Bahona wai palama, train, ken sa yapi le. Ntwinkla ikupa niabuvi edikio horre, ka traini nga hona le safety. Di rambo neti ba hona le safety kamo traini ntsarona. Jaleka arka kupaa, leru kinyezet traini from botzabelo to Blofante, Tabantu, botzabelo Blofante. Because of what? Why rabatla traini, di kosi za N eight. Ze diruwa, ze dira halan khatile niya N eight, di dinzitata. Kenaha na traini haika ze na wabuela di train. Di kosi, di trofokuze. Even li di chemical, si jaleka rebone eh, eh, bekas, eh, ki, Joe Beke laster bone that ntwia, ya kasi ibola ba tu kasi troku ba si namulatu. Haoka wata train, di trokona horre. Di, 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 ntwote, te, 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 dangera si di zamaika traini. Li ten hape, rekopa horre, mo traini zama yanting, ka tu ko ka, for the sake yadi animals. Rekopa, ba tla ba turi eh, 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 za di traini kanaku yeu. Ba konuma, ke horre, haotla haushabe honu bo na horre, di pofol, diska da, da kosa di accidentele to. Rekopa tye tye horre, ha di traini di buele, re supporta this bill. Na ki le Joni Mahetla, please, li relaiso se sentra sa horre, za tinla kajeno litle Blofante. Le trokuwa ma ikutu aschava sa Blofante. Re hatetse gi di kosi za N eight, di kosi za di zela. Boliboa homu, re utwa daily, ba tu ba tu kala, ka traini. Kenaha na re trokali di kosi se swanaleteu, kiya lebo ha tata ela ba haichu.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Joni Mahetla from Wad twelve. I support the bill. Eh, indeed, when we revive these railway services. Eh, because it is a very cheap mode of transport. Eh, and therefore it is going to be helpful to us, the poor of the poorest. And another thing I want the committee to consider is safety in, in trains. Eh, because it is not safe. Eh, we are also making a humble request eh, for eh, train services eh, in both Sabelo, Tabantu and Blofante. As we believe that it will assist a lot in reducing accidents. Because we have a lot of accidents there eh, in N eight. And we believe that the, the introduction of railway services or train services in our area will assist in mitigating against those accidents. And also with regards to the transporting of chemicals. As we have recently seen in, in Jobek, where eh, there was a gas spillage and people eh, a lot of people eh, were killed during that accident. We believe that when we use the trains to transport such chemicals, it will assist in mitigating against such incidents. And another thing is that we must clean our, our, our stations and the railway. Eh, so that we make sure that the animals also do not cause accidents. Eh, we support this bill and we really appreciate that eh, the, we really appreciate that the railway services will be back in our, our communities, especially here in, in Blofante. Eh, because it will assist in mitigating against accidents like we've heard in Lebuakomo, where there were accidents and people died. Eh, we support this bill and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dumelamba haichu. Dumelamba etapile kutwa, diofijinze holo za Africa borwa. Ki Mkonza Joseph Tebea hai. From Wad forty-four, Sopan, Yomotse. Ke supporta na li bili eno ye. Di buye la jutle di buile. But. Hona li, kuri ki sa li twinti. Ko Sopan. Si chava sating, ki na kwenze ki tla di hola. Honu hona li hape, di bese. Ti ndibitwa Diamond Key. Ente ele sa relewe. Ke sa bui ka traina, ki tumoli, motile. Si chava sarona. Kotwa, mo di toropo. Se holo baba bereka ngoma plasi, baba du la ngoma plasi. Kotata for transport. Korabate mo di toropo. Kanaku yeu anse ki tla yo hola, traini yeu. Li no kunzo hona li building tiu ko Sopan. Toropo yaro na ki Blofante, li even now, ha ki klimo, ki klumo stupun, ki klumo toropo nyaton. Awana toropo ko Sopan. Se ki kopa, koboza, matona. Ana, di bese tiu, moba gi la di train. Mo sa honi re unhorre, sporositene ti. Di bese te nu tiu di gasitenguele ro. Kotamo toropo, mo Blofante ni monu, kotua ko plasi niya bereka ngoyon. Kotama about five to ten kilos. Kuitamo skontiri, sa R seven hundred. Si chava sarona, senela ki di pula, bata ba turi di grozara. Ba te uwa di po, kotuamo R seven hundred, kuya ko, toro, ko silo ko plasi, ya Basfandermel. Basfandermel wa kuatile, ha sa taya ba tu, ba iti si moto ropo. Ba iti si moto ropo, even, li mo di voting station ntsarona, mo di voting ntsarona. Resokola ba tu, batalama otu ma kwa wasa ba tisha. Ba tiya no, bese yeu, katawa renal di tirete di kan. Ha i troli ki di po thulu, ha i troli ki hronpata, ha i troli ki eh. Ika se di singueha, because the present taxi eh, silo, structure, sarona. Batala di tirete di swaka kwa mama plasi, na baai. Ba trolo sa ba tu waruna mo R seven hundred. Ba tama ten to twenty kilos, uteri di grozara papeli, o apeli, o silope pile uana. Ba wa, ba tiya no, that bus, inetama gamasaachi. Ya no ba tu waruna ba mama plasi, bata nese ba i chur. At least thi alu kwalimpati, ba tana merwa mpati. Ki tla bayachelte kuitala bo raro kalevene, bese iti, etama yang kadi na kosi. Really ba tu waruna ba sute, li no yana ki tro Sopan. Ki tro Sopan ki tlileba bamama plasi, bu di voting taka da. O esa le ki mutu sakaa, five fat clock, ere ema moskontiri da, kulu yaga kasi te ni da. Pati, awa. Ana re sheve, hona li di tila yana ze tabudi S one twa, S one three two, S one three three. Re sheve horre, re kase honu, re tinge Diamond Key da, bese ma bili ama kana. Ine le security ya na sheva ngore, ye, ya wa te uwa po, uklia sense, awa ni lo te diya. Kiya lebo ha ba haichu.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you to the parliament for coming here today. Um, my name is Mkonza. I'm from Wad forty-four in Sopan. I support the bill. But I, I am here to say that the people in Sopan are, are suffering. And I'm asking whether there cannot be buses put in that area where the trains or, or the railway cannot reach. There were buses there that were called the Diamond King buses. And they, they used to belong to the railway. But our people in those farm areas are finding it hard to travel to town. Uh, because there is no transport, those buses are no longer working. Um, the town for the people in Sopan is Blofante. Even as I am here, I'm from Sopan, but I'm here in Blofante because this is where the town is. I want to ask you as the authorities, where the trains cannot reach, can you not make sure that there are buses? The people are left on the R seven hundred and they have to travel long distances. Because eh, the buses like Fandermel are no longer transporting them to town. So I ask that, since the old buses have old tires that are no longer operating, can you please make sure that the people in those areas have buses to, to transport them at least once a week? Our people in those, in those farm areas are, are really suffering. Um, I thank you again for being here and I support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
No, um, my name is Mahoko Supi. I'm Mahoko Supi. M A H O K O, S U P I. I'm from Wad four, in Blofante, Mangu. Um, I have no doubt to standing here that most of the people don't have access to transport. If this bill has a guarantee for me, yes, I'm standing here, that the elderly people and disabilities are covered here with this particular bill, then I can support it. But if it's not hundred percent covered here, I will not be able to say I can confirm and attend to supporting the bill. If you look at the, the area of Blofante. How, ba tu wita male feela mosporu, now you start to ask yourself the safety of the people there. Does the railway exist in our midst or the railway organization, is it there or not? So those two areas that I'm saying are onerables. The safety of the people or to access the transport. This are we, the elderly and the disabilities. I can, I can guarantee that I can support it without no doubt. If, without those saying that have been hundred percent confirmed in this particular bill, eh, the doubt that is there is hundred percent also. So hona ba twa, ba tla, the risk of transport. I wonder how many times if this bill can be passed? How many people are going to have access to information of, of being aware of this particular bill? Because sometimes we pass the bill, but, but haven't accessed that information. So it is, a man for me is not, is not useful to access the bill or to pass the bill without informing the people accordingly. That's what the bill is trying to say to us or to speak to us. Kiya lebo.
Eh, kiya di, di medisa kaufela, libitola kaki na Mahoko Supi, make it wa Wad four, hona mona Blofante. Ah, ah, kahona ha, ha opo ta, horre kaufela haruna, retoka mokoa, wa hotama, meki na hana horre train, ekaritusa. Impa butata baka, ki bona ma ba bili bili ena. Ha kiya di se ya horre, ngai tsiheza kapangasi tsihezi. Impa hayba bili ena, ekar akarileza, ba tu ba hu di ling hapwe le ba le liduku. Ha opo ta, horre, ngai tsiheza, bili ena. Impa hajuale, ha iko ni, wongali stakora ho ba ne, sena hasian kla kela. Hajuale, haoka ruasheba, hona mona mo, mo, mo Blofante. Ba tu ba itama ila feela eh, horaluei, me sena se bonso horre ba tu, haba sirileteha. Kahona rabatla horre, ho ba le li tsiireleteho, me hape hape ba tu ba hona ufuma na mokawa hokuwa, wadi palama. Ho akarileza, le ba tu ba hu di ling, hamo ho le makowa. Me ha sena se katisi, ingatisi twa kasona, bili na ngai tsiheza. Ha ki tibu ri kiamache twa maka, eh, buwa kadi bili. Impa ba tu, basa tsebe kasona, ki bona usena tuso ya horre ba tu. Ba, ba bulelo kadi bili, impa basena le sedi na bili ena, kahona ba tu, ba lu kela uti viswa ka bili ena. Ilu wa honu oze horre, ba tsiheza ni, kiya lebo.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dumelamba haichu. Ki du ru ni komu, wakotl. Eh, dile, ki bona ilu mutloka, mokoro na relischava. Li ba tu ka kulo ya runa, li ka kofetu kaha, di siki se di kuaha, di zembato. Seni kesera ta, husukupa kore, raerata, raer amachela. Hona li temo Blofante, mo ba tu baba julongo di plasi. Baba kloka intusho, okari di bese ze, ne di zama za railway. Di katu sa ba tu ba hona, traini hape, haba ya ko traini, kuseba ka kuitala ko traini. Eh, ne di poro, hadina hona, di inti kuya kamo, ma fa pa ba tu, ba kloka intusho kati. Di bese okari di kanate mo. Bosana sposo, hona li di plasi, di ka, di ka kong. Hona le ba tla na julamo, ne di di statione mo, maradisa kola di di ti. Ya no ba tu ba, ba tuha long distance, hua hue makos, kointerin kue emela, bese ya jakarande. So hane lo horu ba tu ba, leboni, ba katse uwa, ba be uwa mo ba tu, mbaba kri ya intusho, no ka na butuwa. Ba tu ba, inti ba runa baba shukla han, ba ilu horu ba kloka hakala, ba kucha transport. Ba pe pile bana, puladi ana, habana tuso. Ya na hano koka di reha horu ba tu ba, baba hakala ba, ba tuso. Blofante yo ne, ewu kloko, ewu kloko tata, okara storo petu na. Makala, ate ngachunso ra kriye tuso, hakari tuso. Ya ne, kuru kopa horu, tenyala ha, huli ki, welu horu. Mo di, traini di kloka za maden, hona le bu kloka ba tsiirele, jo mo di statione. Kone di statione, hona no nyana, na ha, ikase la engwe, ba tu ba ba tse la, bakase la engwe. Ba tu ba baka va se seifi, rekopa horu, ba tu ba ba ne seifi, haba le seifi, na kiya anale, kiya lebo.
Thank you ver, thank you very much for the opportunity. Eh, my name is Dorin Kono from Wad twelve. Eh, I support this bill because this is a very important bill. Eh, as we support the bill.
I'll support the bill of the railway amendment bill. If they can make sure that there are safety precautions inside our trains. And also, they must not hire that security campers that are sleeping on the job. Because there's no problem with the trains. But the people, the securities are sleeping inside the trains. And also, another issue, the second issue is alcohol inside the trains. People are making a lot of noise there. Other ones is coming with this big off material. Even if you're tired, you can't sleep there. So, if we can make sure that there is a vandalism of people, it's in your government. Are stealing cables, they're still there. The train is waiting for too long, the train is coming late. Those, it's in your government, they stole, they're still there. If they can make sure that people are not stealing cables, people are not violating the park stations, and there is enough security and police is there. So, I'll support the bill again, and also, I'll support the bill if we can make sure that the local trains that are moving from Bloemfontein to Tabancho, like back in the days, if we're getting, they can be brought back. So that they can be a mode of transport also. And then, they can make faces there, on the plazas there. So that those cars are killing, are killing people. If we can make sure that, I'll support the bill. Amanda?
Uh, to Malangwatoa Rolo. Le vitola kaki en tata makatisi, kijwa Ward 4D. Um, le khatolele fitile, parlamenten nelimona, hoo buaka biliya mutakasi. Meke, katabela wabona ore, parlamenta yaseleza, A N C yaseleza. Gangu kisheza biliyena. Uh, kijla, sheza biliyena na, muhufita. Ha, kabona, hunali puluke, hoka haradi tureni. Um, hariba, hoo hirwe, ba fani ba tabelezo, ya turelezo, ba robalanka haradi tureni, ba faits musewit. Uh, nkae mwe kuhuri, hunali ba tuwanoelanga, laka haradi tureni. Ba etalara ta, hunali ba, ba otlanu drama, hau choluloko ba la, hau tama gaturini. Hau ka nitufazo hori, nhtose hadioka haradi tureni, lili kijla sheza biliyena. Hape, hape, ha, huka nitufazo hori, hau na kusini. Hau na masho, hau zoanu di kaihuli, izinyoga nyoga, lito ne difediswe, kijla sheza biliyena. Hutlameho, hube li tureleze, oh, hube li sukoneza, sen nitufazago hori, di tureni, di tama, han kipuluke. Hape, hape, hau ka hutlisoa, di tureni, di tama yan, um, di tama yan, pa kenzabo tabelo, Bloemfontein, Tabancho. Kajla leboha, harika hutlisoa, kajla ta ba. Hape hunetufazo lori, hoha uwa, difediswe, hube li tureleze, oh, di dechni, kialeboha. Amanda?
Thank you, next speaker.
Good morning, good morning. My name is Valentine Diherdi. I originate here in Bloemfontein. I am a member of Sangko, also a member of African National Congress. Uh, I'm curious. I'd like to know, why did the transportation on railway stop? Why? And number two, you know, I work with all stakeholders. I have never been introduced well in the railway transport. And, uh, I hope when you come back, as you are here now, there will be more job opportunities to our people. If you are really promising, there will be more job opportunities, opportunities for our people. And, um, you know, our children, young generations nowadays, they don't know when I talk about a train. What am I talking about? They don't know. Since it's like ever stopped. Reason why, we don't know. Um, yes, I hear everyone is talking about, uh, old train, we need something like that in the free state. I hope the rail transportation, when it comes back, will be more advanced. I hope we are, we are not going to have complaints, we are going to be happy, and, um, we are not going to only to, or, or, or benefit on, on transport when you come back. I want to strengthen my point on job opportunities. And, um, one other thing is, um, I'm curious, when are you going to start? Because when you end, that rail transportation, we were not informed. Thank you very much.
Itia lebaha, uh, modula stulo. Uh, kene kana li diposo dile maloa, se kene kipozatzo na, se ele hori, yang, yang nkaaya buthokwa, kijahora sentenke, hori, uh, tama iso ya di tere na ile ya e ma yaske yachola, e beraka mona kenyaro na. Mesa bubi disekitengebata hongongora, kaka so na, kijahora, yakaka kense ya na, ki omongwa di stakeholdera. Meha yakaka itisi wesenke, mo ho ba le fa pa la di tere na. Yano yakaka hau tule ya na, ulubueze mo horo na, kajla hube isana lorona. Rele za hori, ike teleka, choma mi sa hori, uh, ba tuwabu lechola, kiti chono, za hobo na di tiro. Yakaka hali tule fa no fa, me, rele kijahora ba kanyaza, ba choma tata ocha aba nanlo o ne. Hori janonjana, bu tata bukitengekanya kabona, kijahora ba shabar na lebono kunku yena, haribuaka tama iso ya di tere na. Ha ba itso horo sentenke ribuaka inu, ibile hape, ha, eh, rebata le bakalati, harizo horo sentenke le bakalati ke. Ki kuile ba tuwale bantiba, nsa ba bua, kwanemo free state, ki mono mo hori, eh, ba kara tachora, renele tere na iye yaseka, houten train. Noro na renele muhufuta, watera na eka na yalofano, moten kakaolo ya ro na. Me, kisolefa na horo, ha ba nsa ba kakisaa di, di tisiyo tene zabo ne, toata tota halubua, ha lutukhu kwa di hongongora eh hori. Lu kabe, lu kwa ka di benefit, tere na ilen, lito na kantaya tiro, ele yalona, halo kaka na keta. Me yano, kano ya na, kibata horo, nono sa nkaaya hori. Nka ya ro na, eh, ibua angakha ya horo, ba tuwabu lechola, kijahora hobo na di tiro, kibata keni, nono sa horo, nui ele nchoko tata, nui bone hori, iadira kadiwa. Ele hori, ba tuwaba kwanemo, kisolela kala mona, ibile, reskerachola, rebona di tere na di emisio, di sachele di beraka, rasa bolela se teka kacholo.
Thank you, next speaker.
Dumelang, bakaiso. Ya bua mona, ki Isaac Staitai. Award 12. Uh, kikata samochatlo wa A N C. Uh, biliyena kia sheza. But leha ki sheza, yalo, haipkari, hoba ting bili mona. Ki hoppola, leratsora bili mani, eh, kakisano hor. Leha nare tere yalo bili ewu. Nerense taba ya hori, ya treeniye na, ezama, from Tabancho, but Tabelo, to Bloemfontein. Mpa hufitela, lesa zila kashekulina. Haribo ne, ore, ikena, musewitzi, nteni, ezahala. Ya hori, treeni, ore, bone ikena. Ba tuwaba ngata ba buile mona, ba buile katsela ya N8. Eh, bola ya mbato, lesa zilelisa zati. Mpa, haribo ne peto, ya treeni, nerabate, kuam Bloemfontein, ya kothabansu. Uh, haape, ki bona, haape, biliyena kia sheza. Ekabulela le, bana barona, ba sasebiti, mbohulu ba ting, haip, hoya ine kenin, ine kenin na kuya pili. Ekabe, bana barona ba sibiza. Mpa hufitela, lesa zila kashekulina, haiso keni, treeni, seporu treeni, kamo kabo saben. Le Tabansu, le Bloemfontein, kiko pa, eh, seretsera kisoa mo. Reto buaka bili, ibesa kinyu sibizo. Hoba nare, ya ribua, ri lozena, kafte adete, ibesa keni sibizo. Eneki onan, thoe ebula, mbanabarona, mbanabarona ba matela, itraksin, ba matela, hokai hoba ne, ha ba sibizi. So, hoya, bana ba sibiza, di treeni, tere keni, nitla bua le misibizimingata, katsela, M maka ta. So, kauso yalo kia sheza, mpa kiko pa hori, ikeni sibizo, kialeboha.
Greetings, my name is Isaac, and I'm from Ward 12. I'm also a member of the African National Congress. I'd like to start by saying, I support this bill. But, this is not the first bill we've heard of. I remember, there's a one bill, uh, hearing we attended in Kakisano War. And there, we were promised that there going to be a train from Tabancho, but Tabelo to Bloemfontein. But up until now, nothing has happened. We haven't seen that train yet. I've heard a lot of speakers talk about the accidents that happened in, uh, on N8. That kills a lot of people daily. Even in that regard, there still has no change. There still has no, we still doesn't have a train from Bloemfontein to Tabancho. I do support this bill, because I think if this bill is passed, we may have employment for our children. But even today, there's no train from Tabancho to Tabelo to Bloemfontein. So, I'd like to tell you that please do not come here and tell us about the bills, but there's nothing that is happening. Because of, this is the thing that makes our children to start using drugs. Because of they have no employment. If this, if, if we have trains here, our children may have employment. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Eh, molweni. Ikamalam, ikamalam, dungnovyo tokoma, du suka, eh, Ward 5. Uh, di funu kasa kakulu, lenda ba ye biliye reluwe. Ngoba, ikakulu, mm, na dia sibenzisa i train. Inma kie, ye reluwe. I biliayo, i, i, iamba, inpita somewhere somehow. Because, kasi kala i traini, i traini ta imaje es tubeni, kuthe i locomotive. Locomotive, anda no ba intokona, ba intonanti azimba, ba kwazu tubi train. So, ta imile yo i traini, abastaleli isi zatu, es mesa i traini, ye majes tubeni. So, we have, niavisi su ba, sino ulimala somewhere somehow. Ngoba, ye ma intengenza oma five hours to six hours. Enye, iinto, eh, traini, ni pa kutengi swa uchoala. Ilendo yenza i crime, uba abantu ba limalenga, pakati traini. Iki chila konaba tengsando ni uchoala, because mnanda ya itabela from here to East London. After i COVID, eh, i traini se isokoola. Eh, konango ku i traini, iamba after fortnight. If i hambile apa, eh, Bloemfontein, Friday. Isao fika Saturday, eh, East London. Ipide, ibu yes Sunday. Ipide, iamba after two weeks, so se atela, please, i traini esuka East London to Jobek. Eh, eyo kavela, um, i traini ta imile yo es tubeni, i passengers maskalelo ma bangatuli. Tina askuas ba, silandia is security, ngunsabenzwa is security. Ekfunegazeze kuti zuzo stalela, i problem ye traini, imelentoni, because askuas u tuba ti i train. 2017, eh, i traini, isosoloza, ibisuuka, eh, eh, East London. Iteo upuma kwayo, eh, Berlini, before i fike, eh, Bleni. Isosoloza, inubenele, ndale train kuthe inten, le kuti. Eh, 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 laishandi tutu. So, but tata ba, but tata ba yo nabana ba itseki signal. So, tina siyazi, i traini, ambange signal, okani ambangan tuna. Please, stalanis, na tenke traini, suke, kisalaka.
Good, good morning. Uh, my name is Nomvuyoktokoma. I come from Ward 5. I support the bill, uh, because I use the train. The only problem that is confusing with the bill is that sometimes, trains just stop in the middle of nowhere. And we are told that it's because of the locomotive. I don't know what the locomotive is. I am not, I'm not literate, therefore, I don't know what that is. The only thing that I know is that we are in danger when that happens. The other problem that I have is the alcohol that is being sold in trains. I use trains from here to East London. And when the alcohol is sold in the train, that put the other, eh, passengers in danger. Trains also take too long, um, to, to, um, to go. Um, when the train goes from here to East London, it takes about four days to arrive where we are going to. So, we are requesting that that thing needs to be rectified. And also, when the train stops, um, we are not told what the issues are. So, we are requesting the security guards to be trained, so that they come and tell the passengers what the problems are. The other issue is that in 2017, when I was travelling from East London to Johannesburg, the train collided with another train, um, at Berlin Station, and we were never told what the problem is. We are asking that all of these things need to be rectified. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other hands? Last opportunity. Number one, number two, number three, number four then there as well. Can you come to the front, please? Any others? Last, last chance. Number five, thank you very much. If you can come to the front, please, and the first speaker to the podium. Your name and any organisation you represent, and then you can start. Thank you very much.
Eh, molweni, dungola nenu tuu, mnanega, amandisuka kuwa 12. Um, na kulendo zoanje stetwen kumanga, ma komreti, namdi avmela nanazo, kabe, ndisa kala kunini, ninasngoke. Ni keni tatele ama va wetu, engaleku, ngora, kukani, sukuma ni kutetwa indoa eh ni, joba na bobesi ju kuti, kukani, nsumane be kakisaa, indoa ye train, eh, alapa Bloemfontein, ni nga tinatis ngaba na yo. Ne, lenda wye tuwye, esporu sishala kuyo, inobunguzi kakulu, ngayokba. Inda oza konaku kuteka njeni, na guna banya basala pakati ku, abasala konaku, na kuzinda wese traini. Ababi zoama pa eda, then is too risky indoa yuti. Si benende awesjengezo, pakati kulu kishle, tu ndisa obule.
Good morning. My name is Bolani. I come from Ward 12. I support the bill, but I am requesting that our concerns please be addressed. Because, uh, there is a thing that we, um, raise our concerns and no one takes care of them. The other problem that we have is that the train stations are not safe. And, uh, there are doctors who are staying in these train stations. And when we, um, go through the areas next to the train stations, we don't feel safe. So, can that issue please be addressed? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, can we have the next speaker, please?
Eh, dumelang. My name is Bitumealolo Paila. From Ward 47. Eh, kijlo buaka bili, kijwa organisation inya A N C and Sangko. Eh, kene kere mota be ya bili, kia ananela. Kia ananela bili eh ya reluwe. But, kiko pa ba eh, but they must go back to investigate. There's a lot of, eh, stations around the location. Next to showground, there's a, eh, there's a station there. It's need to be fenced. At least, ha ba ka fence, afela gamatuko. Hori, hobe se ife, ba tuwaba fitangamo. Sometimes, si haosebinako, ya hori treeni to fitanin, hoba nintesebeza. Hunali, hape, hape, stationi, katla sa, he de dalte. Mo ba tuwailu ngore, bana basoka budulu. Ba ile ba ipaya mo, ba kona hori, ba bele mo ba dulante. Mpa fela hunali stationi, mo pele ma, mo ba dulante. So, it's not safe for ba na, isele ma reklona, le bana ba ba, budulankidi treeni, tedi tama isanti kuti. So, kene kere leone, they must go back and investigate. Hori, efensiwe, kapi, li hoba ne. Ba tuwaba bo na, ba letseka lefasi laona, mpa fela, hunali tose ilu ngaba, rokomeli swika zoni. Ha ba fuena koya hori, treeni, kafitaka na kumango mo. Hoba ni lidukulu idiya fe, tare fitamo. Sometimes, si, ona hanaroka kala keshini, hau na treeni kafitang. But isele ma reklona, hadi accidente tengat. Hunali, hape, eh, we, eh, stationi, se tama yan, kara, eh, site is a Bloom Spray. Lito ne, di tama isati kuti. Kiko pa le so, hunas stationi, so hoba ne, hoso ahilo maklu. Hule ha ba li developmente ka akata. So, stationi se osasebeza, osen sasebeza. So, rechoka hori, di stationi ka fela, tedi around, tendi di sibeza. Hadi, kinyetu efensi, hori, hobe se ife, for ba tuwailu, ba dula hufi nana, li di stationi sa reluwe. Kiasa ananela, eh, statemente sa reluwe, safety bill. Ha fela, ba ka buela, ha fela balo sheba hori, ki intechoka ngore, di tama isue ka safety. Eh, le hori, itla benefita ba hi barun, kialeboha.
Greetings, uh, my name is Bitumealolo from Ward number 47. And then, I'm from an A N C organisation called Sangko. I would like to start by saying that I do support the bill as it is, but of course, with some conditions. I would like you to go back, please, and do some investigations in many of the stations that we have around, especially those that are close at all, some of our townships. Because what happens next to these townships is that, is that there are a lot of people who actually are residing very close to these stations. So, I believe that to protect the people and to make sure that they are safe, such like stations need to be fenced, or to fence them around, so that there, there is a measure of safety when it comes to them. The problem is that a lot of people who are living near to many of the stations, have never been informed as to what time does the train actually passes next to their neighbourhood. And this has caused a lot of problems and danger actually, for our young ones, who are coming from such like communities, where people have actually settled themselves in some of the lands that are next to these stations. So now, this is the appeal that I'm making, to make sure that such like places actually have been fenced around, so that their danger can be eliminated. The thing is, there are people everywhere, wherever there is a station, within the surrounding and the vicinity of these places, there are people everywhere who have never been warned, when they started living in these surroundings, as to the times when the train passes. And this has caused a lot of accidents. For example, there is another station in Bloom, Bloom Spray, uh, which actually carries the same problem that I'm mentioning. Now, what happens here is that a lot more time is that the train, which passes here, is a goods train. And again, we've got houses near this particular station. It's one of the active stations, and there are such like many other stations that are very, very active and in operation, which I believe we need to have them fenced in, just to eliminate danger. This is can be, um, investigated, and then this will bring back the measure of safety. I do support the bill. Thank you very much. That is with conditions.
Thank you, next speaker.
Uh, dumelang. Uh, kiri medisele, karre o parlamenta, batumpeyi, ba tilingwa. Uh, my name is Telshazo Mndi, officially known as Tambo, an activist. That McDee, Honorable McDee, it's really a privilege to be given this opportunity. But my concern to accept the bill, yes, I'm going to accept, to accept the bill, and to support it. But I have a, a concern. I'm privileged to be here, to attend to this hearing. But my community at large, it was the first time I came across with this bill. But I remember saw it on TV. Maybe you have done a great job. But we need to popularise it to our community. I'm from Ward 4 here in Bloemfontein. Greater people in the community, I'm sure, are not aware of this bill. And I would like to make a call that you go back and popularise it. Even, you can utilise also the schools. The people must be able to interrogate it, or be able to read it. Because I, first time when I, we came in here, I perused it, but I didn't have time to check all and critique it. So, it's best, and maybe it will be appreciated, that we are able to critique it, and to correct maybe where you didn't see, uh, the oversight on it. Then, I will definitely support it, and I thank you for the privilege that we have.
Eh, dumelang, kiri medisa, kijwaza parlamenta, selimona kage nu. Le vitola kaki Lushazo Mndi. Um, mokotrei McDee, kilebuhala kudla, ena, ya hori, ido kilimona, rebua luena kage nu. Um, kijla sheza biliyena, mpa kinali, machwe mne, hori, um, ba tuwaba ngata ba, shavinse kutwa, husol. Kijla kachola bili, rebona biliyena. Ka rebone, hanyani televisioni, uh, mpa, jolo kaka kisoa Ward 4. Hariso ka reba, li na koya hori, lerishebisise, kabutalo, re manulle. Ka hou, kiko pa hori, luku lele, husichaba, nikasabisa, li di kolo. Hori, lito ba hatse biliyena, hobe, ba tuwaba kwanu, hue bala, bay ba di sise, bay manulle. Ba, ba lukisa li di poso, tika ba ngdi te, han ra di bo na. Um, hore, tere tere tibon, fana kama yukuwa, afelitinkayo. Ka, ka hou, kia, ki peta hatata, kijla sheza biliyena, me kilebuhala mwenye, kawa oba mona lelo, kialeboha.
Thank you, next speaker.
Eh, dumelang. Ya bua mona, kimme, dilashwane Agostina Maroi. Kishama ni Ward 45. Kili membara ya A N C, ibile kili membara ya Community Policing Forum, under Bloom Spray. Eh, nantwa, ke, ke kijlo ibua, yuchwanyani fela, yutlile ba tuwaba seba buile bo ngata, kataba ya hori. Eh, musewitzi ona wa, wa transnete, hau tla, ofoka, se mo ba che. So, ki, kibata, wchalusa nthwe ya hori. Ene, ika, ika, rejolo khasen, teli tama li sheba di bili. Ka harame tia, hona, kiro na, retseba ngorona, ba chabao ilu ngore. Banali di qualification, ba bamba, ba kiti graduate. Banse ba duti, ba snami, sewezi. No ka ba joan hori, rekale, rekale, hona joale. Hori rebon se, hori, musewitzi ona, kiniti, ozi le ngwata. Eno tata, obenefita, ba cha hahulu, kiniti, rinalili, kumilili ngata, la ba chabao ilu ngore. La ba cha ba ilungore. Aba sebezi katla samabaka ona ana. Kanakongo utluu uswante atwe butshabelo atuwa tla msebeti Blofante. Chellete ana leo, na kia huli kana hutwa mo, hutla mona fele. Ha fisa mona Blofante, kitla ala udula litsa arka fele antse a aleka hobona hona, ka tuswa ka uketele tse abila ajile, ona chelteu. Elu hona swante apalameka yo na ochukela la butshabelo. Kuyutu si sa hori, trini haye ka ba ting. Etla yezza hori, tika nyetso ya chellete, imo fe huli kana hutwa butshabelo hutla kuwan. Eh ochukela la, ochukela la haye. Libaka leo ki lushalu san taba ye na ki hori. Tere bisi uinka singile hutla Blofante. Ha ucho na hale hori onkeri chen. Joali kina hanaritrenio, na kamucho kineki tseba ka ting. Kadili motana tabo nineteen sixty-eighty, sixty-nine. Kanakohantse ritla rehul. Ha ono ya kalmo yanteng, onka tiki ti eli kani hoya. Ibe yu ochutlisi uibolu ka hori. La haoka fele wa kichele te moli nding, utla hona ochukela la kuwan. So mabaka ana kia ushalu san, kia ilungore ki bolela hori. Ki sapota bili ena ka holle holle. Impa hakisapotele fele hori, isebetse butshabelo litabanchu. Li Bloomfontaine. Renalidi tohopo tse ngata, se maba pi jolo ka bo divestopobo springfontaine. Mo ilungu hori haoka tlosheba. Ba cha ba ting libona baslo kana koya hori bay tuteka huli kan. Hutla di university mona kadu weekende abalu kela ya haye. Aba hono ya haye kaliba kala hori. Di chellete hadi li kan, ki ba ana haba tsebo bo lo ka chellete. Joali ha analiti ki teatrini, kan nitki dumela hori. Haye ilu weekende utla ya ahutli. Baba mbabi duti joalo, ilu hori kiri hutsan. Habana bo mangue. Bay ilungu hori akamonke la leo na tiki tiu. Impa kia dumela hori, hantse lita joalo. Ka sebeze ena ya hona ya transnet. Reklwa foko san twaya hori, rebona bana bana baslo camping. Ba isele hori, libona ba accommodateuwe. Ka hara ntene ya transet, ka ucho jolo kire, ki sapota bili ena ha hul, kialebo.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I'm from ward number forty-five and that is from an ANC. And I'm also sitting in the policing forum organization in Bloom Spray. I'm not going to be too long, I just want to speak in short. But what I want to say is that the transnet services that you are talking about here, I just wish they could focus on our young people. The bill is good, I do support it. But as we, what I'd like to appeal to you is that as you go around discussing this bill, do make sure that it focuses on our young people because we've got a lot of them with qualifications. We in our homes are the only people who know our young people. They've got qualifications, some of them are graduates, but a lot of them are actually unemployed. So what I wanted to appeal is that as you are actually working through this bill, please make sure and consider our young people. What used to happen basically back in the days is that we used to be able to have a train ticket that could actually help one to have a round trip. For an example, whenever you are going to some places. But today, this is not happening. For an example, young people do come maybe to Bloomfontaine to seek for work. And they can only have one fee that helps us to, which helps them just to take a single trip. Let's say maybe coming from butshabelo to Bloomfontaine. The next thing from there, they don't have a return fee. So back in the days when they had a ticket that could actually afford them a round trip, it was very easy. But right now, problems that are happening, which have been experienced by young people, they come here seeking for work. Now at the end of the day, they're very hungry. They don't have money to return home. Or any money which they may have had are going to use it for lunch just so that they could eat something. And then they have to seek for help, for someone to help them to go back home. So this was very convenient by the time when the trains were operating and people used to have such like a ticket that could afford them a round trip. I remember this is something that used to happen back in the years like nineteen sixty-eight and to nineteen sixty-nine in those years. We used to enjoy that kind of a privilege. So that being said, I want to say that I really do support the bill. But I'm not only supporting it to be of benefit only here in Bloomfontaine. It has to serve people such as in Tabanchu and other places that are around just so that our young people today can be able to benefit from what this bill is all about. Especially those who want to come here also for study in Bloomfontaine. Want them to be able to come here, spend their time studying for the whole week and be able to go back home over the weekend. So if they had such like a kind of a ticket that I have explained, they would be able to study with peace of mind and at the end of the week be able to go back home to a place as far as butshabelo for an example. Please think about this because most of them are orphans. They don't have parents, they don't have a mother. So they need really, they need a good help. So I wish transnet services can really take this matter into consideration and help our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dumela, kiale dumedi sa. Libitola ka ki Solile Manda, I'm from ward forty-seven, ANC and Sangko member. Tosen, di nklatsaga di pedi fele tseki tuguangatson. One, hard transnete ekare tusha fele katrin eya in Icelandan. Because I fitama in Springfontaine ya ema. Utta utshinfa di shor. Sometimes it reema five hours, sometimes six hours. Because of that, ntyu ya utshincha, because infrastructure eyangkwa na highso biti. Abaka kala ba luksa yew. Number two, kaba kala hori, renali challenge yanga ta ya ba cha ba sasebezing. Recopa, nani kitla kopa hori, transnet? Yuchukulele muwangolo wa ona muwenwa khaali. Hovani, ha ki hola, transnete ninalespolisa sati. Ena ba tu na basa utu, mona ba tseba komaponisa wa ashaapa ene, ba kwalabatu. So haba cha ba na ba ka hero, ba ituwa seponisa sa transnet. Etla tusha ha hulu ntyu. Hovani, di sechuri tete di lindi. Di kampani zela zele unhor ba di hero. Hadipatale ba tu at the end of the month. Baba mbabi dula di four months ba sapatalwi. Impa kampani iba pati. So ha wa nalidi ntyu zewu, hori ba tuwa sukuli. Transnete haye bele maponisating, atla hona konslo kome la infrastructure ting, kialebo.
Greetings, my name is Solile Manda and I'm from ward forty-seven. I'm a member of ANC and Sangko. I only have two points. The first point, I'd like to ask transnet to provide us with a train from east, from east, train from here to Bloomfontaine to East London. Because we have a problem. Sometimes the train will just stop in Springfontaine and we are told that they are changing coaches. Sometimes we stood there for about five hours because we are told that there are no infrastructure for such. Number two, it's because we have a challenge of youth unemployment. I'd like to make a plea here. That in the olden days, transnet used to have a railway police. And people used to know this railway police because they were strict, they would hit people and also they would arrest people. So if transnet can hire these unemployed youth to provide such services to be the railway police, this will help in alleviating youth unemployment. Because the current security services, they don't pay people. Sometimes they are, they have been paid, but however, they don't pay their employees. People will be standing for about four months with non-payment. So I'd like for transnet to look of such things. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker.
Kialebo, eriki dumedi sa, baita pilubose ba tso amparlamente kwa na. Ba tu bua kataba yena, itso anga hori ki bi. Katsele ki ukisi sankai ting, ekare bua ka milawa trini. Mo trini za mani, sporo. Railway, not a train. As such, but mo zilai za mani, mo trini za mani. Poluke oya ona kawa juana. Kanedi poluke oswansi de ting, fileni yewa trini yew. Because honale ma ta tamona South Africa. Mo hutjuang di tzipi. Lo regishwa mani scrapyard. So trini za ma uluma tzipi. Ilu yonadis railway, sporo. Vale. Sporo se nasinalidi, tozere bizanga wa ki di train signal. Iling, ndeka ngoho to yine ulala, ndreni fitaka pa ema. Ya utzu wa also na ntyu zenu. Hovani, diyenzwe kati tzipi. Vale, poluke oya ntyu zu, ekay juwa juana. I know it gives. Shoka ba, manpower. Katse la yew he. Ekare musele zutja tso, oya unhulu. Ulo ezolo, bohona opoluke oye ting, fileni yena ya train. Railway. So, ako pahe baita pilbodi. Ntsang, ki va ken, sita oka, ba cha ba luselisa sporo monwa sheba. Sporo asu, zuvi, slo regishwa scrapyard. Train signals are not stolen. Lo regishwa di scrapyard. Shoka manza wa isu. Ki chayela, bili ena monwa. Ha kia ipulela ona ngima. Kinisa mpoza. So vale kia bua kire, naga libitso ki mutu twinki, James Jobe Sitole.
Thank you very much. I wish to thank parliament and thank you for this opportunity. As far as I understand, this railway bill is not strictly about trains, but it's about the railway, where the train moves. And as such, I see that safety is important for the railway because we have a problem in South Africa of cable theft. And as trains move on a steel railway, these railways are, parts are stolen and sold for money. Also, on the railway, there are train signals which indicate when the train should stop or go. And these are also stolen. So we need security, we need manpower to make sure that this infrastructure is secured and protected. I see this as an opportunity for youth employment so that they can go and work on the railway to prevent cable theft and other such activities. As, in conclusion, I would like to say that I support the bill. My name is James Jobe Sitole. I thank you.
We have, we have a slight problem. So I just wanted your indulgence here for a minute. One of the transport vehicles somehow got lost and only arrived now. And from those people, some of them have indicated to me that they would like to also say something. And I think we should allow them in, but I don't think we should allow them to continue to speak. It's my opinion, but unless you can convince me that we should allow them to also speak. I think that they should do written submissions because there is still time for them to do written submissions. Okay, if the House is in, if everybody agrees, let's continue with the meeting. Okay, now that we've received your inputs. I want to thank the people of Mango Un, specifically Bloomfontaine, from the bottom of my heart. And you deserve a great hand of applause from yourself. I just want to, I just want to add, you know, I'm standing in my ward here and I feel humbled. So let me explain to you the way forward. All the submissions that you have made that are relevant to this bill. We have heard you, it will be represented in our deliberations. As the Free State is our eighth province. We still have the Western Cape to do before we start deliberations on the bill. When we have done deliberated. The bill still needs to go to the NCOP. After it's been approved by the National Assembly. All those other things that you have mentioned did not fall on deaf ears. We will make sure through our counterparts in the other departments that they are notified about your concerns and your suggestions. We are very humbled by the people of the Free State and the way that they have humbly given us their inputs over the last couple of days. But to everybody that wakes up tomorrow morning and says, "Yo, I should have asked this question." Or had this specific comment that they wanted to make. You still have the opportunity to get a form in the front here and do a written submission. And on that point, I would like to thank the capable staff and officials of the Department of Transport and the people of this portfolio committee that have been assisting us through the provinces. And to all the other staff and translators, we thank you very much. Suakse buyer, buyer, donkey on all yellow means of any Bloomfontaine. Now I wanted to give the African translators a chance as well. There is, there is something, a little bit of lunch being prepared for you. And please be seated, you'll be served and we'll given on how you'll be served when, after I've closed the meeting. So please just be seated, stay seated. So thank you very much and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.